Welcome, everyone. A call to order, the November 1st, 2021 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting. Would everyone please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Wagy?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderwoman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Comments. Anybody in the public that would care to address the board now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes, and includes people who are zooming in.
Hi, my name is Stu Clark. I live on St. Clair Avenue. I just wanted to commend the board for what's being done with Brentwood Bound. I was down there on the site, walking around the other day, and it really is starting to look nice. You can see that extended trail that's going to come behind those buildings, heading east. That's going to be a real critical part of this plan. And then also, you know, the area where the playground is going to go is going to be spectacular. Just one thing I was thinking of, the board might think about the spots that are available on Manchester Road, because there's still several lots available on Manchester. And you might want to take a look at some of those for a purchase and to kind of set for the city, so we make sure we have one spot right on Manchester, still open for city use, that would then back up against that back trail. But anyway, I commend the board. Things are coming together, and it's looking great.
Thank you, Stu. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We will move on. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Agenda. Any changes? Any modifications? Any objection to approving, saying by acclamation, seeing none, it will be so approved. Next up, our Mayor and Alderman Reports. I have no reports. We'll move on to Alderman Plufka.
I have no report.
Alderwoman Tice?
We will have a Ward One meeting in person at the Community Center next Tuesday the 9th, and look forward to seeing people from Ward One there.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims?
The Ways and Means Committee meeting will take place this Thursday at 5:30. We're going to be talking about budget, 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 so bring your red pens and your attention span. It'll be very fun, and I will keep you in suspense and yield to Alderman Wagy to talk about our Ward Two meeting coming up.
Alderman Wagy?
We're having a Ward Two meeting on Monday, November 8th, and then Public Works is going to be rescheduled. It was November 11th, with that being Veterans Day, and honestly, off the top of my head, I'm not sure everyone we're rescheduling it to. So it's being rescheduled to some date.
And where is your Ward Two meeting?
Oh, Rec Center, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Let's see here. Alderman Gould?
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No report.
Alderman Shelton?
No report.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
No report.
Okay. Moving on down to Item Six, City Administrative Report. We have three items under that. First is the Brentwood Bound update. Hello, Craig.
Hello. Good evening. Craig Shelton with Navigate Building Solutions. Before I go into my typical report, Alderman Gould, I told you I'd get back to you about MoDOT and what was going on with the Van Mark Way. So I wasn't able to attend the meeting today, because I had another Brentwood Bound meeting that was a little more pressing, but I did hear that they're still coordinating the work that's going to take place with the Dorothy Playground and the Mary Avenue work with Ameren and Spire. And they don't have a definitive date when those utilities will give them the green light, so they're not going to be starting on this work next Monday, which is what we originally published, and they need more time with these utilities to determine that start date. So we'll continue to keep you and the board apprised of those updates, but right now, it's not going to be next Monday, it's going to be a future date. So.
Thank you so much. Were you able to, or is Janet able to upload the drawings for Van Mark Way?
Can it hear? No, I can't say with certainty.
But we did get those.
She does have them.
Okay. She does have them.
Okay. I'll check on it and send those out to the residents that were asking about it tonight. Thank you so much.
All right. So going into my typical report, the update, since I was not here, the last Board of Alderman meeting, we'll go back to the October 4th meeting, so pick up tonight's warrant list and the October 18th warrant list. So the total spent since the October 4th Board of Alderman meeting on construction costs was $1,933,260.69. Going to soft costs, $179,098.16 was spent on material testing, playground design and engineering, legal fees, marketing expenses, project management fees, and development consulting fees. Next is property acquisitions. $50,000 was spent since the October 4th meeting on property acquisitions. Going to the bottom categories of funding, the city received another reimbursement check from Graves Greenway. So the total funds received is now $377,516. Going to additional funding sources, so one note that's really exciting is Eric Groensfelder, the Parks Director for Brentwood, successfully led Brentwood in receiving $370,000 for the playground, so that was just received a week or two ago. So please commend Eric on that. That was another big win for the Brentwood Bound projects. And then the next three items, what I wanted to note here is the city is receiving excess economic development sales tax that's not being spent on the actual expenses of the actual bonds. And right now, in '21, a conservative projection is an additional $800,000 in EDST funds beyond the expenses to service that debt. '22 and '23 are also projected to receive another $800,000. So not that you guys need to spend this, but it is excess money that I just wanted to put in additional funding sources, because those additional funding sources, some of these don't have to be used for this project, but it's good to just note those, especially considering with the playground that you guys are all going to think about tonight. If I were you, you know, we've got contingency, we've got plenty of money in additional funding sources, $5.2 million, which more than pays for that playground. But if I were you, I'd want to know, hey, there are risks out there. What if, you know, all these things happen? It's good to know that there is some additional funds coming in from the EDST that, not that you hopefully need to, but if you ever had to, there are some funds there that you could pull upon. So I'll track those and update those. In the next four months, we should know what the '21 excess funds are. Like I said, $800,000 is conservative, it should be more than that, but I'll update those amounts like I do the investment income, just to make sure that we know how much money is in the fund balance from this additional sales tax.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes, I have a real quick question about that. So the excess money that's projected, does that money, because of its nature as being related to the certificates of participation and derived from sales tax from the ordinance, does that money have strings on it, too, as to how it can be spent, even though it's in excess of what our expectations are in terms of financing the debt?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Okay. So it's got to remain, it's got to remain with this project?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
That's how we're tracking it.
Well, okay, but I mean, I'm just saying, we're obligated, I think. Are we? I'm asking that question, I don't know the answer.
Sure.
That because the money is being generated as a byproduct of sales tax revenue, sales tax that we ask for?
It doesn't necessarily need to stay with the project, and that's outlined in the indentures for the issuance of those bonds. So, but...
But as I understand it, this sales tax, half cent, is not subject to the AB sharing?
No, no.
And so therefore, as part of that, because it is a specific purpose?
Yes.
I just wondered if any revenue from that's got to stay with this purpose?
Purpose meaning the Brentwood Bound project, not necessarily.
Really?
Yeah. Not necessarily. And I think the board, if the mayor wants to speak to that, I think you brought it up, actually, and specifically required or requested that Gilmore Bell put in the language, the ability for the city, if at a point in time, we want to use it for things other than the project, for citywide uses, the language is very specific, that gives the city the guidelines to do it. So it's not restricted to just Brentwood Bound.
Okay. And we have the Economic Development Board that deals with how to spend that money.
But isn't that Economic Development Board geographically tied to the Brentwood Bound area? I thought the corporation is...
They're tied to the Economic Development Sales Tax.
Right. It's how to use that EDST funds.
Even though the money's for that district, I guess in a way, simplistically, they are tied to the district, because that's what we're using to fund the project, the 2019 comps.
But if they were so motivated, they could turn their attention to some other part of the city?
They could.
Yep.
They could.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Gould? Just as a follow-up to that, so you're just noting that these are expected revenues?
Yes.
Overages, excess revenues. And we're just going to track those, and then at a point in time, we can decide what to do, whether we then apply that to pay it down even more, the burden of the project, or potentially some other...
Million of decisions, yeah.
Okay. But right now, we're just keeping it on here. It gets a little confusing when it starts to add to the number at the bottom that it's sort of a funding source, but I guess it's just sort of...
I agree.
We will clarify that in the budget document. There's a section earlier on in the book that has fund summary, so you will, as you see currently, the fund balance for general fund, all the different funds, sewer lateral, stormwater, capital, you'll also see for economic development sales tax, because now we're going into the second year, and we are beginning to build a fund balance, so you'll start to see us track that in a different format, other than what Craig presents.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderwoman Tice? Do you have your hand up? No? Okay, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Any questions for Craig? Okay, thanks, Craig.
And then I can roll into the next item.
Sure. Right ahead. Yep.
Okay. So this is a really exciting night, so we're excited to share this with you all. Tonight, SWT will present to you all the schematic design. Schematic design is about 30% complete, but it's far more than the conceptual design that we presented to you all back in May at the last work session. So since last May, when we presented to you all the $2 million, $3.5 million, and $5 million options, a lot of work's been done. SWT, the city, and the Navigate team have been working on surveying, coordinating with property owners, coordinating with site utilities, putting actual pen to paper, and actually starting to really envision what this playground could look like, and most importantly, spending a lot of time of how to maximize the play value of this playground, just to make sure that this playground is just something this region just hasn't, doesn't have right now, and that this truly is a destination playground. So we were able to present this to the Public Works Committee a couple weeks ago. It was all well-received, and we're really excited for you all to hear from SWT, and also to see this 3D video that really shows the vision of what this playground and the impacts, the positive impacts that could really be brought to this new park that we now call Brentwood Park. Once SWT gets through this, we are going to be seeking a few approvals from you all. The Public Works Committee was presented with a couple of these approvals unanimously. They approved it, and they're bringing those recommendations to you all to consider tonight, and we'll go through those later in the presentation, but I just want to let you know, there will be some action that we'll be seeking from you all tonight at the end of the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ted with SWT and Eric Groensfelder with the city of Brentwood.
You may reinstall that clip here.
About the funding for this? Because I know we looked at various levels of designs, but I don't remember approving one of them. What's written in our notes is as though we have approved a final budget.
Nope.
We haven't?
You have not. You have not. You have approved the design of a particular dollar limit, which is what is being presented tonight, the design.
We approved the cost of design.
Yeah, cost of design.
Cost of design, yeah.
Here, I'll just, I'll cast it to one of these TVs.
Right. I think you can do that. I think I can do that. 15-inch Roku monitor right here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ted Spade. I'm one of the co-founding partners of SWT Design, and very excited about presenting the design and where we are. We're at 30% schematic design, or we've completed schematic design. And just to give you a better idea of where we are in the design process, you know, I hesitate to call this a playground. It's really an experience. It's an overall site design destination experience. It's so much more than that, because I think at the end of the day, you know, grandparents are going to be excited about being out here. You know, I really want to make sure that moms and dads are playing with their kids, right? Make it an immersive experience that is attractive to, you know, not only to the community of Brentwood, but even as a destination for people to come to Brentwood. It's really quite extraordinary what you all are doing with the Brentwood Bound project. And so one of the things that we see is really building upon the Brentwood brand, and what does that look like? What does that feel like? Obviously, you've spent a lot of time with the event pavilion and the design of that, and then how we're designing the destination play environment, and all that's going on throughout the whole development. Making sure that it's really family-friendly, connecting people with nature. I think this is a great opportunity. When I think about, you know, how exciting, you know, being along the creek here, and along Deer Creek and the watershed, and making that as an opportunity to educate the people that come into this space, I think is also very critical. And then really supporting the economic renewal. I firmly believe that healthy parks and attractive parks that are super exciting can be a catalyst for development. I always like to say that the parks are the yellow canary in the mine. If they're not, if your parks are looking pretty bad, you know, we got a problem, right? And I'm a firm believer of that, and there's a lot of ULI data and other data out there that proves that out. And then one of the things that we've been talking quite a bit with Navigate is really thinking about how can we maximize our bidding competition, as well as maximizing the work that's going on site right now. So one of the things we'll be talking about is earthwork. Earthwork is a great opportunity. It's the most cost-effective way we can really create space, is through landforms. And so you'll see, if you haven't seen the animation already, you'll see that there's a lot of landform being built. And so the idea of being able to take the soil that's going to be dug up to do the pond nearby in the amphitheater, how can we repurpose that? So when we think about sustainability, it's how do we leverage the environment and things, even in the construction techniques, thinking through that very much. So then you certainly heard about leveraging grants has been a great opportunity, and again, getting the grant that Eric got is very hopeful. So one of the things, I wanted to just kind of step back just a little bit, because I know a lot of people, you know, are talking about the destination play environment, but I see this as a bigger environment, right? The play physical space is, to me, the springboard to the greater park. And we think about the entire kind of riparian corridor of the creek, or really of the creeks. There's three creeks that kind of come in into this area, which I think is pretty exciting. And then there's a lot of other open space here. So thinking about the play environment that is connected with the bikeway system and the interconnected waterways here, and the interconnected ecologies, and so this happens to be the hub for all that, and really celebrating this as a hub is very important. So since we last talked, we did show you kind of the play experience being these different levels of cost. And so we were asked to look at the kind of the full build-out of a $5 million plan. And so one of the things that we did is really look at this in contrast to some other play facilities. You may have remembered that we, you know, we did a number of other destination play facilities around the region, and the one at O'Day Park was a little bit roughly in the two-acre range. And so what we did is we carved out two acres here of the property to create these spaces. And so what was really important is breaking those spaces into different kind of family environments. We have the Family Fun Area, the area that we call kind of the crazy climb, which are going to be kids that are probably older. We have an area that we refer to as the hub, which is kind of the center focal point, where I always call it the home base, right? If you have kids and you've got different age groups, right? You have younger kids and older kids, you want to have kind of a home base or the ability to see a majority of this area. And then we have an area that we refer to as the Water Play Area, and then lastly, the Adventure Spine. And so this is the spine that connects all these pieces together, where there's a lot of activity and accessibility all along that. So one of the things that we look at is, and I think Craig alluded to the idea of play value. What is play value? Play value isn't just a post-and-platform playground with a slide on it. It's the entire environment. It's the landscape, it's the interconnected spaces, it's the materials, it's the seasonality, right? The ephemeral quality of a space. We want this to be a destination, not just for the summer months, but throughout the year. If any of you have ever been out to Veterans Tribute Park, I've been out there in January, when it was about 50 degrees, and it was crawling with kids, you know? So there are going to be those moments and times where we need to be thinking about how does the seasonality impact this. So this diagram is showing you the overall design and how we see the hierarchy of connectivity. So the kind of the heavier dash are the areas that would be the main ADA accessible routes. They're kind of these, almost like question mark, these spaces that lead you throughout the play environment. And then the purple lines are these different paths and connections. And so some of those paths lead to just a quiet space, and some of those paths lead to much more active activity areas. And then the big yellow circles represent the actual kind of entries, if you will. So thinking about the branding and identity of kind of the park within the park, this will show you some ideas about how we create those gateways into this space. And then lastly, the GRG Trail itself kind of being that trail that leads you further out into the park and into the greater community, which is super exciting. So what I want to do is I want to walk you through each one of these spaces. And what you're going to see this evening is a representation of the types of play and activities that we would anticipate in each one of these areas. One of the things that we'll be doing is, in order to do competitive bidding on this project, is we are going to put these spaces out to the bid market for the different play equipment companies, and ask for their, you know, their bids and their proposals based on the spaces that we've designed, and we'll put together a performative spec of what we expect to see. How many slides? How many swings? What types of functions do we want? But the images that you see here are kind of our preferred direction, the look that we're going with. So in the case of the Family Play Area, you could see it's kind of broken into two different areas, one area being the swings. So swings are super, super popular, but we want to have different types of swings. We want to have swings that are you-and-me swings, where a parent could sit across from a tot, or swings that might be for kids with different accessibility needs, and then, you know, the swings that I grew up with, that you could, you know, swing and do the underdoggies and things like that, right? So I don't do that anymore, by the way. But the idea that there'd be this separate area is, we do that for safety reasons. We don't want to have kids running through the swing areas necessarily. And then the rest of the space is given over to a lot of ground-based activity. Ground-based activity is important from an accessibility standpoint for ADA. We want to be able to, you know, invite kids of all abilities to a space, to a play piece, opposed to post-and-platform playgrounds. And then the centerpiece here is an overlook. The overlook here is located in such a way that mom and dad could easily get to the kids that are down there, or they could have a quiet lunch up above the playground. And then you also have a direct line of sight to the comfort station, and I remember we talked about that months ago, making sure that there is that visual connectivity here. So you could see there's a lot of activity, just even in this, and what we want to do is encourage things like these slides that we have what's called parallel play. So if a kid's coming down a slide, you know, mom and dad or grandma and grandpa can come right next to the child and help them down the slide, you know? So there's different ways of creating that parallel play and activating a space. The next area, we just referred to this as the crazy climb, because we see this as just a wonderful challenge to have a centerpiece piece of playground equipment. This particular piece that we're showing you is a one-of-a-kind, it's never been used in the Midwest. It's very unique from the standpoint that at its high point, it's about 25 feet up in the air, but you can see it has a lot of kind of net cabling systems and different platforms that the kids can engage in, and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of capacity, if you will, carrying capacity for kids to play in this. We also have things like these more, these more social swings where multiple kids can get in them. One of the things that we're pretty excited about, I know Eric is, is the idea of doing the zip line here, and the zip line is a side-by-side zip line that's not been used in the St. Louis region marketplace as well. And so you can see we've isolated that out. Again, we want to minimize the amount of kids running in front of the zip line, but it's a very safe type of zip line that has a governor on it, so you don't want people flying too crazy, and you have to be in harnesses, right? So this is done in such a way that we feel it gives high play value, but it's safe as well. And then there's these quiet spaces on here. This area, I kind of refer to it as almost like the Hobbit Hole, the Hobbit Tunnel, where we'd have a green roof over the top of this. This happens to be a project that we did for Rankin-Jordan Pediatric Care Facility, but the idea that you could integrate the landscape and the play and the topography into these more quiet spaces that were kids that may not want to be by all the active climbing occurs. There's a number of ways to get up and down the hillside, so getting back to that diagram that you saw all the noodles on, you know, there's a whole number of ways that you get from the major pedestrian spine into this space, through whether it's log steppers or the hillside itself. And then one last thing that I'll point out is down here at the bottom, this is more of a playground piece that would be natural wood logs, but it's designed in such a way that the safety and the fall zones are all taken into account of. So all of these things have been designed in such a way that we meet all the ASTM guidelines for safety in this area. Then the next area is the Adventure Spine. This is one of those main walks that go through, and the idea is that you're able to rise through the walkway system, and that walkway is under 4.5, it's like 4.5% slope, which means it's not an ADA walkway where you have to have grasping rails. It's a universal access walkway that people can navigate through this. But by the time you get to the very top, whoops, sorry about that, you know, we will have navigated about 12 to 14 feet of vertical. And so anybody who, whether you're in a wheelchair or have needs in terms of walking, you'll be able to get to the high point here and experience the same thing that anybody else would experience, and I think that's important. And so when you get out to this point, this is a wonderful little grove of trees here that we have sound play activity, different types of play equipment for sound, and then the social bench area. And then at this point here, there's a canyon, so there's basically a 10-foot-high wall where you'd have a climbing wall, similar to what you saw at O'Day Park, where there was a wall and climb... Some, some of which you saw at Oday Park where there was a wall and climbing. So we're kind of getting a double entendre out of our walls that they're, they're activated as well as being something that's necessary. And it creates this canyon through here where
Recording in progress.
That people can cross over from one area of the play environment to the other area of the play environment. And then lastly, along the spine here, we would like to have a unique platform system here with tunnel climbers and cargo nets. If some of you have seen the primate, the primate jungle exhibit over there, kind of a similar attitude that that has. So it'd be kind of a unique piece that would be all part of this adventure hillside here. And then one of the last areas is the spray ground itself. Again, we wanted to be this super unique element for Brentwood. You know, you may have remembered the last time we talked about kind of the history of the space and that there was a quarry here at one time. Really thinking back to kind of the modern version of that, you know, making it kind of a nod to the once aspect of that. And so what we would do is more poured and placed concrete here that would create almost these seat wall-like elements here. People could have an amphitheater-like space as they're watching the kids play in the water here would be kind of this wall that would hold up this hillside here. The heart of this space is, are again, kind of that, that main area, that main hub where we'd have a pavilion that would overlook this space. And there's actually a spray ground component up here. We see things like having an actuator up there. What that means is you might have a button up there that a kid could push up above and it could shoot spray down below. So it's that interactivity, that cause and effect that, that's really important. So a lot of this water play area would be low gallon each nozzles that would be actuated. So they wouldn't be on all the time. They'd only be on when somebody hits the actuation device that then allows that water to come down. So one of the things that we'd like, the idea of this becomes kind of the bluff, if you will. And part of that bluff would have these three kind of streams through that. And so the idea is that, that, you know, the upper portion of this would be indicative of Shady Grove Creek. So we might even put words in the pavement, call it Shady Grove. And then over here would be Deer Creek. And Deer Creek would continue on its merry way all the way through. And then Black Creek would start from here. So we'd like, even though it's not an exact replica, it's the idea that, that you have these three creeks that flow generally through this space to give that sense, a notion of sense of place that is all about Brentwood. And then as it comes all the way down through here, you know, we could even talk about that being the River de Pere, right? So all these things concluding the River de Pere. So when you look at this image on the upper area, that's what would happen is these different, different spray devices would kind of funnel into this creek element. And then we might even have things like you see here, this is a park we did for Webster Groves where you have these little, these little diverter, you know, channel things to help back up the water to give some kind of control, if you will, to the kids to, to play in the water. And then one of the things that I'd love to see here too is some form of precast chase lounges or something that would be fixed at chase lounges and, you know, make it an event. Make, you know, this is, this is like going out to the pool and out to the edge of the water. Let's, let's celebrate it and make it kind of comfortable, fun and unique and hip, hip, you know, relatively fun for, for the young families as well. And then this water would then go into basically the stormwater BMP areas. And then that water would get recirculated to a cistern up above. The idea being that that cistern would take all that water and use it and repurpose it for irrigation. If it overflows, it would go into this bioswale area through here and we'd handle all the stormwater management for the park, for this portion of the park all along this edge here. So in total, when you see all that put together, you know, there's a lot going on. There, there's a lot of activity. You could come back with your kids when they're three and four years old. And when they're 10 years old, they'll still want to come back here because there's going to be different experiences for different age groups as they, as they get older and they'll discover something new each time. So one of the things that we want to do is in order to make this a destination play facilities, we do want to do some unique architecture. So this represents kind of a brand that we're looking at. You'll see that we'd like to use kind of muted softened colors from the Brentwood logo here as, as, as using some form of composite plastic here that would allow the color to go through the acrylic glass. If some of you have been out to Centene, they have a similar element there. So when I think about play spaces, I think about multisensory experiences and color and sight are part of that. And so we thought this would be a nice attribute to have for all the architectural components. And then when we think about materials throughout the project itself, thinking about, you know, good contemporary uses of concrete, the use of plant material, the seasonality of plant material. I know that there's the glue lamb structure that's being done at the pavilion. How can we, you know, you probably saw one of those pieces of play equipment in there had a glue lamb component to it. So using things like that would be very appropriate. And then one of the things I really wanted to bring up is the performative landscape. I think one of the things that make Brentwood Bound really special is basically you're doing a real large-scale performative landscape, you know, with how, how you deal with this corridor and improve it for, for better uses, you know, from where it was, the flooding and all that. And so making it a performative landscape is critical. So what that means is we're going to make sure that we're not just doing a rain garden because, or a BMP because MSD says we're going to need to do it. We're going to do it because it's the right thing to do and it's beautiful and it's educational. And so kind of getting that double, triple entendre out of that. So making it educational, being able to have school groups out here, having, you know, a monarch waste station. So make sure we pick out plant material that, that attract pollinators. We'd already talked a little bit about reuse of water. You know, maybe we even do plant labels out here to talk about the different tree species that are native and resilient to our, our climate. And then lastly, one of the things that we want to continue to keep our eye on as you work with art committees and art throughout Brentwood is, is saying that there are multiple places throughout this play environment that could be not only considered art by the way we're designing it, but if these are some key spots along the way where you could add art. And Indian Camp Creek Park, if you haven't been up there, this is up in St. Charles County before you get into Lincoln County where we used Casley to do some frogs and we had these custom pieces here. And even the idea of things like a kaleidoscope viewer, this has a, like a kaleidoscope where you can actually put plants in it or picones and you can spin it. And, and it's, you know, it's like, it's like the yellow submarine. It's pretty cool. For those of you that know the yellow submarine. And then what I'd like to do, because, you know, the 3D really says it all, what I'm going to do is exit this and show you the 3D piece. And this will give you both a, a good general overview of the space from kind of the bird's eye, and then it will go into a series of vignettes. And so we understand that we need to knit well into the overall project, right? The overall GRG system and make sure we knit well into the, the pavilion and event space. One of the things that we're looking at, I, I didn't mention this, but this idea of a boardwalk extending out over the GRG trail and overlooking the amphitheater is something of interest. You could see how we're really building up that topo in that area with that overlook. But landscape will be a critical component. So, you know, as you know, it's, there aren't any trees in this area right now. So thinking about strategically and picking out trees that will help with shade and making sure we get benches in the right location for shading will be critical throughout the But, you know, as you could see, one of the things we, we were thinking about is, is really branding this, you know, whether we use the, the Brentwood logo on the water tank itself and picking off those colors and creating this inviting entrance into the, the, the destination play area. And really you could see all the interconnectivity with stairs and walkways that take you to the, the main hub area. Within the main hub area, as I mentioned before, there's this, this real, you know, visual connection to spaces throughout the area. But certainly there's the, the connectivity to the water play area is, is really paramount here. And this creates areas for shade and kind of these alcoves as we look at this. And I mentioned that canyon, this, at the very end of this little snippet here is that canyon where you have that climbing wall and the bridge across that takes you to the sound play area. And then that sound play area, which is at that very end of that node, you could see we want to create this nice lovely grove of trees with the different sound instruments in this area and then being kind of the theater in the round, except you're, you're sitting in the circle with, you know, hopefully a major tree. If we, if we spent money on one tree, it'd be that one tree right in the circle there. Zach, can we do music? Yeah, the zip line, again, it's, it's really, I think it's about four feet of fall. It's not super, you know, fall, a big fall, but it's, it's done into a guideline, a safety guideline that can be done without having a harness. So again, what we'll do is we'll put this out to multiple playground manufacturers that have lots of different types of equipment like this and, and see what kind of competition we can get with playground manufacturers. Then when you're on that play spine, that kind of that, that adventure spine, you could see how you're rising above that space. And there's lots of ways to kind of connect in and connect with that area. But it gives everybody an opportunity to really see that entire space and enter the playground at different levels based on your capabilities. One of the last areas is the, the family play area. This is that piece I was telling you about that has a, a glue lamb beam structure that creates kind of this unusual, you know, clover leaf, if you will. And, and again, these are very engaging to different kids with different abilities. So you can really interrelate and interact with one another in that. So that is it. And I am going to get this back to Craig. And so one of the things that we've been doing is working with Navigate to come up with strategies about how to bid this out. We've done a tremendous amount of cost estimating to this point so that what we've just, primarily a lot of what we showed you fits within below a $5 million number. That comes with a lot of effort, a lot of bid effort on our part. But then just from a strategy standpoint, how can we, you know, maximize this and then have bid alternates along the way? So I'm going to let you take your shirt.
So just like we handled the recent GRG connector project, we wanted to have a few alternates because in a traditional environment, we hope that the bids come in below budget. We've seen with this pandemic, the inflation and supply chain, supply chain challenges, and it's been the opposite. But we still, we're hoping that things stabilize in the future. A lot of these components wouldn't go out to bid until spring. So we're hoping that we could have some alternates and if bids come in positive, we can bring them back to you all and we could, you know, potentially accept some of those, just like you guys said for the GRG connector project. We also want to be respectful that you guys charged us with designing to a $5 million budget. So while some of these components probably are nice additions, just like the event lawn building, we didn't want to go above that budget. So we, we put out some alternates with certain values for you guys all to consider. So these alternates also, most of them can be done later, you know? So if you didn't do them now, several years from now, you could add some of these in as a separate Brentwood project. Also, we wanted to not look at things that affected the play value of the playground. So you can see a lot of these alternates are things that enhance certain features like, I'll start off with alternate one is the family fun pavilion. So there still is that big pavilion called the hub that Ted spoke about. That's right in the center here. This is a secondary pavilion. It's a nice to have, it's valued at $250,000. That's something that could be an alternate. It also could be done later in the, several years from now because that pad would be built. This would be the structure that'd go above the pad. Alternate two is a water capture system. So this is something that you all saw at Oday Park. This is when that water goes to that water play area, this would capture it and then send it out as utilize that water as irrigation in Brentwood Park. So that's valued at $200,000. Alternate three is the overlook. So this is like at Veterans Tribute Park. We all walked over that nice deck and overlooked the lake. This is something similar to that. That's valued at $400,000. Alternate five, these are those nice arches that Ted spoke about, the color theme of the park with those acrylic panels. So that's valued at $80,000. And then alternate four is the same arch, it's just on the other side. There's two different arches that enter in the playground. So again, just some potential things to consider that don't affect the play value of the destination playground. So schedule. So tonight obviously is the board presentation. Then the next step is to get the playground equipment ready to go out to bidding. So like Ted spoke about, when you have these destination playgrounds that have custom playground equipment, it's really important to do an early bid package to get the playground manufacturer actually part of the design team because they actually design and engineer those pieces that connect to the SWT design. So it's important for them to be part of that design process and that allows the documents to be finalized to go out to bid to a general contractor, which is going out, right now we've got a target going out to bid in March. So that playground equipment bidding process would be December and January. From November through March, the rest of the design and permitting process would be ongoing. March, we bid out that final phase to the general contractor and then construction would start in April and it's about a year-long project. So the goal of the team is, you know, to open up Brentwood Park in spring of '23. And even though a lot of the Brentwood Park components will be done end of next year, you know, opening a park in December, January is not the ideal time for the weather conditions. And also it would, it would enhance the park to give some time for the landscape to grow and establish better. So this playground could be done in time for that spring opening, which is something that Eric has envisioned. So alderwoman Tice, you asked for me to talk about funding. So this is a new slide that you have not seen. I didn't have this on the Public Works presentation, but you guys charged us, I should say, the aldermen, alderwomen charged us with designing to a $5 million budget. And so we're slightly below that. As Ted mentioned, we're roughly $4.97 million. So not including contingency. So this isn't touching contingency because we still have risks out there and we're still in construction. Brentwood has $5.2 million in additional funding sources. So this is the funding at the bottom of my typical spreadsheet. In addition, like I mentioned earlier, by end of '23, the EDST will have at least $2.4 million in excess. So as you can see, that's not needed for this project because we have $5.2 million in additional funding sources. But it's just there that if another risk pop up that's unforeseen, that if you wanted to, you could pull it on. Goal is not even to touch it. The point is, is that it, it's there if something did arise that we're not familiar with right now. So when you add up those two buckets of money, that's $7.6 million. And again, this doesn't include the contingency. And as I reported at the works, the, my typical update, as of tonight, we've got $4.39 million in contingency. So that's not inside any of these dollar amounts. So that's where we are today. And as we have done on all these projects and as I reported on earlier about this new municipal grant, we never stop where we're at now. We're constantly trying to get additional funding, additional grants. And one of the important And one of the important, um, reasons why we're presenting this all to you tonight is that, uh, one of the approvals we're looking for is the, the approval that we're going to do this project. And why that's important is because our renderings are outdated. They still show a soccer park, uh, soccer field. They still, they don't even show an event lawn building. A lot of the renderings have been adjusted by the nature of design and engineering. So with your all approval, we're going to update all those renderings starting tomorrow. And Eric, um, if I can call you up here, he's going to, these renderings, he's been begging for, for months and months, because he wants to start, um, approaching private donors and other grants. And we need new renderings for that, because our renderings just don't showcase the Brentwood Park right now. So Eric, if you can talk about some of the other funding.
Yeah, so as we've talked about in the past, uh, and Craig said, you know, we're, we're very excited about the grant we just got. And that's just the first piece of what we see. Uh, there's at least three more grants we're going to be applying for, the Land Water Conservation Fund, uh, the RTP. And there's also, uh, NRPA's hopefully going to be announcing soon, a water, uh, play feature, uh, grant that they typically do with, um, American Water, which is great because Missouri American Water's in town. So it'd be good for them to, to support us. Uh, in addition, you know, what, what we've been waiting for is to get these sort of last renderings, so we can start going to the private donors. Um, we already have a, you know, placeholder meeting with, with, um, West Community Credit Union. I'm working with SSM to get a meeting on their books and then Bola and I were talking about other places we can, we can start going to. Uh, but we were kind of need to know what, what the, the path forward is, so that we can say, this is, this is what this playground's going to look like. And here's an opportunity for a family pavilion. And when you love to have the, uh, SWT family pavilion just sitting right there with your name. One of these days, uh, Ted will actually say yes to that. Uh, and again, you know, Navigate still needs to chip in a little bit too. So, you know, we, you know, we're working on those two as well. So, uh, I, I, I think, you know, for us, it's just getting the, the final direction. Would have loved to have this years ago. Incredibly excited, um, to be presenting this tonight and the opportunity to start showcasing this to potential donors in the near future.
So before we take, um, questions, Bola, are the Public Works recommendations, are those in front of them for a resolution? I don't know how that works. It is, great. So yeah, those are the approvals that, I'm sorry, Public Works presented to you all, that we're asking you all to consider. So that's the objective tonight is to get some guidance on those three items. Uh, but before we go there, we can, uh, the whole team's here to take any questions you may have.
Thanks Craig and, um, Ted and Eric. Just for the, the people who are watching, might not have access to the, to the board docs. Just, why don't we just go ahead and tell them what the three asks or the three recommendations are from, from staff?
I can read it or, okay, so I'll read it. The first one, and these three come with unanimous recommendation from the Public Works Committee. The first one, approval to do the rough grade of land and leverage the use of the dirt from the excavation of the lake. That's the first item, read all three. Second one, approval to move forward with bid process on playground equipment using what was in the 30% conceptual design. And the third, approval for SWT to proceed to 60% design phase and move forward with the next iteration.
Great, thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of questions and I'll open it up to the board if, if everyone's okay with that. Is there any way to break down the percentage of the cost that's attributable to the, uh, playground equipment versus the actual construction?
Yeah, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's about $800,000 is the playground equipment.
Equipment is 800?
Yes.
So the, the bulk of it is the construction?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that first bid package we're looking for approval from, the one that would go out to bid in January, uh, or go out to bid in December and we did receive bids in January is we're looking at the cost being around 800,000.
Okay. And, um, secondly, on the alternates, alternate number two, the water capture system, Ted, this might be for you. If, right now, that's not in the, the design, how does the, how does the water play work without that? What, what happens to the water that goes down though?
Yeah, I mean, typically what we have found in the St. Louis market is because the cost of water is, you know, so low, relatively low, they just let it go through into the sewer system.
Okay.
They do have systems where you can capture it, but the, once you start doing that and reusing it, then it's got to be chlorinated. You got to go through the Department of Health.
Right.
It's a maintenance item that's just crazy. So, uh, we typically, in our marketplace, don't suggest it, but I love the idea of recapturing it for irrigation.
Okay, and that was my only question, because I just, I, I was wondering if we were going to recapture and if so, then what does that do for health issues? Okay, that's all I had, any questions? Yeah, Alderman Lockmiller.
I had the same question regarding the alternate two, uh, for $200,000. If that's not included in there, and as you explained to the mayor, it's just going down the drain, does that jeopardize going for any of these water conservation grants?
The specific one I talked about for NRPA is, is a water play feature grant. So it would not jeopardize that one. There are additional grants that we continue to look at. And if we have the water capture system in there, it's, it's a nice kind of feather in our cap to say, this is what we're going to be doing with the water. I don't think it would ever, uh, negate anything that I'm trying to do as far as funding.
Okay, thank you.
And that water capture, again, we're not talking about reusing the water, it would just simply be used for irrigation. Okay, Alderman Plufka.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to with, with the way this is set up, I, I, how do we, going forward through the process, given, given what the asks are tonight, how do you, how do you maintain, the possibility that we may still want to see what a, a park that's less than $5 million looks like? Or a park that's less than $3 million looks like? I mean, it looks to me like what you're asking for permission to do tonight has everything to do with the five minute video presentation, which is $5 million plus. I mean, what's in that video is almost $6 million. I don't, I, I, it was promised to us all along that we had not yet made it, and we have not as a board made a decision as to whether we're going to spend $5 million on this park. And what I don't see is with these recommendations and these requests for approval, that we're maintaining in any realistic way, options other than this option.
I mean, at some point we have to, we have to do documentation and, and bidding for certain things like the playground. I mean, I would suggest, you know, one, one item that could be easily deferred would be like the, the splash pad itself, the, the water play area.
So you're contemplating leaving portions of this design just blank for a period of time?
Right.
So in other words, the design would still be the same size, it would just would contain far less in the way of features?
Right.
Both topographical as well as equipment based?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd want to give you as much flexibility in the future by, let's say, getting things graded and ra, ready for these components later on.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing to do is just make a decision now and just say it's a three and a half million dollar project. And we read, you know, we design just to that and not have these placeholders. I mean, I, I, that's the, that's the tough part of, of designing this is how do we, how do we game board it in a way to give you that flexibility? Uh, but at some point you have to, you have to move forward and, like the playground equipment. I know that the grant that went out, that, that, uh, we got with, uh, uh, the municipal grant, was for the playground equipment itself, which happens to live within a space with fall zones and all of that. So to your point, yeah.
I, I understand all that. What I'm lamenting, I guess, i- is somewhat to Alderwoman O'Neill's point earlier. And that is that when we started down this road, it was made clear to us that we were easing ourselves down this road, that this was not an all or nothing proposition, that we were going to have options. And it strikes me, although this is a unbelievable design, and, and I think it's, it is, I mean, you should have every right to be very proud. It's, it's really beautiful and it is a destination in, in all respects. And I'm not against it, I'm just, what I'm concerned about is that, you know, I, I, I represented to my constituents that we were easing into this process of spending this much money on a park. And, um, it, it appears to me that the options, the less expensive options are sort of falling away as a practical matter, as we get closer to the point where we're actually talking about going out for bid. And I guess I just curious about when we made that shift.
Yeah, I mean, um, I recall getting direction from the board to design to a $5 million playground. So that was ultimately the contract that was approved with, uh, SWT was to bring forth to you all the next phase of design, which is the $5 million playground. So like Ted said, this is 30%.
We approved the cost of the design of a $5 million per go. We didn't, we didn't agree to spend $5 million on a playground.
Yeah, designing to a $5 million playground, yeah.
Right.
I agree, it's just design.
Okay.
And, um, so we're here at 30%. So that means the project's 70% incomplete. So ultimately, like Ted said, I mean, if you all say, you know, we don't want a $5 million playground, now's the time to,
Okay.
to shift. So we have flexibility. There's only, this is the first stage of design since the work session, which was sketches and really no survey data. So there is flexibility here, we just need some direction from you all. This is the first time, besides going to Public Works, that we're in front of you all, based on the direction we thought we received from you all.
Well, I, so I guess my final point is that, that is just what you kind of alluded to, is the fact that we really are having that debate tonight. Because going forward to 60% and, and full design, it'll be harder and harder to pull ourselves back in any practical way. And, and does, and, and make a park that makes any sense whatsoever at a number far less than $5 million or even $6 million.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alderwoman O'Neill.
Yeah, um, I had thought that we asked for a $3 million design, a $4 million design and a $5 million, which is the, the upper limit. So, so to, to see this as kind of a given isn't what I had hoped to do. I have a couple of comments about things in there. First is that everything in there is sunny and bright. Those trees are going to have to grow really fast to get to be that big. And people today are really concerned about the increasing heat and sun with sunscreen and things for kids. So the one object to me that looks like just skin cancer being poured down is the overlook. Um, you had called it a boardwalk earlier. I don't see any real function for that except walking out around it, which is sunny in the summer and icy in the winter. So that was going to be my one thing to say, I could certainly live without that. The other thing is that, that you mentioned colors with Brentwood colors, but then the design incorporated light blue and yellow and everything. It's sort of a hodgepodge. Is it possible for a small group to get together and kind of come up with some colors, a color scheme, a brand or something? And, and not just have motley colors, but take those colors and do more of that overhead screening? So there are more places for families to sit out of the sun, because I think that's going to be important.
Anybody else? Yeah, Alderman Waggy.
Yeah, I mean, to, to the, to the kind of like the implicit decision to go with the $5 million playground, I personally don't feel like we are. I mean, maybe it makes it harder to back off in the future, but I think what we're giving authorization to do tonight is go get more data, get more finalized data, right? These are estimates of costs. By going out for, for actual bids from playground manufacturers, they're going to know exactly what the details are, exactly how much they cost. But we have not committed to buying any of those. It's like any other RFP that we put out, um, we don't have to do it. I, I think the only thing that we're doing tonight with these three decisions is allowing them to leave the dirt in that area, instead of trucking it out to Creve Court or wherever it's going. You know, so yeah, we'd have a big pile of dirt, but it's not actually any cost to, to the project. So I, I still think we have a little bit of time. Uh, and, and the benefit of sharpening this as well as the data is it allows us to go find other funding sources. I think, you know, the $5 million playground is going to make a lot more sense when we know there might be other funding sources in addition to that $370,000 that we already got. So I think it's, you know, I don't think we're backing our, peeing ourselves into a corner very much here yet. Because I, I think, you know, come January, even March, I think that's probably when that, that final decision of this is the direction we're going or not, and what alternates. And I think it would be easy to, to just take things out, right? Maybe you just have a hill and we get rid of one of the, one of the spines, the adventure spine, and, and maybe build a future. So I think we, we still have a lot of flexibility and we're not really over committing to anything at this point. I feel very comfortable with where we are.
Just question, so items two and three, which is approve to move, approval to move forward with the bid process on the playground equipment, uh, using what was in the 30% conceptual design and approval for the SWT to proceed to 60% design. What's, where's the money coming from that? Is that still part of the, the half million that the board approved?
Correct, yeah. So the board approves, uh, SWT's contract to design a $5 million playground all the way through design. So there's no additional funds required from you all for them to keep designing.
And the, the first item, which would be actual moving of dirt, is that, where does, does that come out of the construction budget or where does that come from?
So we would ultimately, if, if this is the direction you want to go, and, uh, we would ultimately work with Alkeely to come up with a cost. They would save some money by not exporting that dirt, but there is some cost to compact it. Um, so there would be a minor cost that we would bring you all as a change order that would come out of the construction budget.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be offset by the lack of having to move it?
It just depends what we have to do and we're working through that right now. Right now, if we've, if it's a matter of just dumping the dirt over here, it would be offset. If we have to place it and compact it, which is a big effort, putting in eight inch lifts and compacting it, that could offset that.
And, and the last question I have is, let's just say hypothetically, the board approves item one, which is the rough grading. And they go forward with that, I think, is that what you were saying to Alderman Waggy? Is if ultimately the board then decides not to go forward with this $5 million playground, but instead the three and a half million or even the $2 million, is that a waste that has been done up to this point? Or is that something that we could still just live with if, if, if the board decides later on not to go with the five? And again, with the understanding the board hasn't decided to go with the $5 million.
Sure.
But if the board decides to go with a three and a half or the $2 million, what, what happens to the, the grading that has been done so far?
We would just work the design team to make sure that the contours would make sense in that area. So you would just have more topography over there, more hills. Instead of the hills having play structures and slides on them, they could just be bare hills with grass on them.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alderman Lockmiller, I mean, I'm sorry, Gold.
Oh, you know, had the right ward. Yeah, you did. So that, that's, that's good, at least that's, that's there. Thank you for taking the time, um, to present it both to Public Works and tonight. Um, I, I felt like you did a really good job of answering some of the questions that maybe we had at, at Public Works and, and expanding on it some more. One of the things that you said that I, I liked was the, the idea of knitting it into the environment. I thought that was a good term to use. But one thing that you didn't mention about knitting it into the environment is the residential homes around it. So my question for you is, is how do you anticipate if this is full of kids in lots of, um, fun cheerful amplified noise? Would you envision that the trees that you have along the perimeters near the residential, would those become then eventually, uh, after several years of growth? Sound barriers or how do you, how do you expect to mitigate some of that?
Couple of different ways, because I do remember when we, we met, you know, uh, and I showed you kind of the very conceptual sketch. That was one of your comments was allowing more border or more buffer area. So our design took in consideration a lot more border or buffer area for plant material. Uh, also the way we're grading it and the topography, a lot of these play areas like the, the crazy climb area and, and the family area, they're, they're lower than the properties that are above. So a combination of the topography and the way it's been graded, and then adding conifers, you know, buffer landscape in those areas, will go a long way to, to help mitigate that. Is it perfect? You know, you, you probably need to have 600 feet of buffer, you know, and a sound wall, you know? I, I, I don't want to give the, the thought that we're going to totally mitigate sound of a play area to the adjacent neighbors. But we're going to do our best with the space that we're given and creating that buffer area. So a lot of it is psychological. The other is the hours of operation, you know, uh, with the play area too, is I think some of those things would, would be more, the fall under kind of a dusted on type of activity as well.
Sure, no, I understand that. And I, but I think as you move forward, um, again, not, not to be, um, so enamored by the fact that, you know, we've got the GRG and the, and the, and the watershed that we're sort of knitting into.
Right.
the watershed that we're sort of knitting into, but really be mindful of residents that are bordering it and making sure that you know that there will be an impact for them, but there's also a value for them as well. The canyon climb wall, I'm just curious on when you guys build those. It seemed like a pretty significant vertical, vertical lift or, or grade. And there's people passing through, since it's a sort of a pass-through corridor. How do you keep from kids from falling or, or even like losing their, their footing and then hitting somebody as they're walking by?
Well, I can't, I can't keep them from falling.
No.
And, yeah, I couldn't even keep them from somebody falling by even if we had a lot of area. So I think the key is having, you know, the proper fall zone and the, you know, proper fall attenuation surfaces in that area. It may be that you end up having to, you know, place signs. I mean, we're, it's not unusual that we have, you know, you might even have like the color change right there. There may be a color change in the surfacing there so that people say, oh, I'm, I'm entering a different area. So visually, there's ways to kind of create that acuity in that area. But, yeah, it's, it's hard to add everything.
Yeah, no, I understand. Just, just again, just, it was a, when you see it in the, in the 3D, that's when it starts to sink, sink in and go, oh.
If you notice, I only have it on one side as well. So we definitely wanted to have it, you know, more on one side. And it may be that the surfacing, we should do two colors. Like maybe we have like the through path closer to the one wall where there's no climbing and have a different color there. And then the fall zone area, maybe it's a difference. So I think there's some things we could do to help give visual cues in that area.
Great. Two, two, well, one more, one comment. I, I agree with Alderman O'Neal that the overlook is probably one that could easily, in my mind, fall off of this and not really lose a whole lot at all. On the water capture, I had some of the similar questions as, as everybody else, but does that, and this may be for Eric, would, would the cost of, of recirculating and leveraging that water offset costs that we'd need to have for irrigation anyway in the, in Brentwood-bound area?
Yes, is the simple answer. We definitely would be reusing that water instead of piping in new water for all the irrigation that we're going to have. And, and we do have irrigation throughout the whole park. What is the cost recovery will depend on, you know, how big the tank is, systems, things like that. And as we get further in design, we can bring, you know, how quick the cost recovery. But I think we're talking about two years cost recovery. Sound about right?
Yeah.
I mean, a year to two years would pay for itself.
I mean, I think that's important to, to evaluate when we get to that point, when we start looking at, okay, what is the, what's the cost to irrigate in general that we're already going to have to factor in, but then also by putting something in like this, how, how does that bring that cost down and, you know, all that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we get some, so why don't we take up the, the first request? We want to do these separately. Yes. Alderman Waggy.
Do you want to motion?
Yes, I do.
I motion that we vote to proceed with keeping the dirt from digging out the lake, moving it over and allow rough grading for the, the design that we saw tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay. And so essentially, that's the first recommendation, right? Okay, so we've got a motion by Alderman Waggy, seconded by Alderman Tice, to, for approval to do the rough grade of land and leverage the use of the dirt from the excavation of the lake. Any further discuss, any discussion on that? Do we need roll call on this or is voice roll call? Okay. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Aries?
Great, thank you. Let's move on to item two. Can we get a motion to approve moving forward with the bid process on the playground equipment using what was in 30% conceptual design?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for recommendation number two. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And finally, can we get a motion for approval for SWT to proceed to 60% design phase and move forward with the next iteration?
Still moved.
Second.
All right.
Can I have a question?
Discussion, yes, absolutely.
Can you explain exactly what it means for 60% design phase? If this is 30%, what is going to change with the 60%?
We're going to start moving forward with more submittals. We're going to have to start our submittal process with MSD, with the stormwater management for this area. We're going to have to work with our architect and structural engineer to start designing some of these pavilions and walls. We'll be getting into more detailed grading and material selections and details, you know, for construction, you know, heading towards construction documents. We'll start looking at the materials. One of the things that we want to do is when we get the bids back from the playground contractors and we start selecting some of these, there's a lot of interface that has to occur between, you know, things like the walkways and net climbers and slides. We have to make sure that our detailing that we're doing on the site work matches up with their standard criteria for safety and construction for that. So we'll begin that process as well. So it's mainly engaging a lot of our consultants more fully in, in the process. So up, at this point, we have not heavily engaged our consultants to this stage until we got through this approval process.
Alderman Gould.
Okay, you look like you're looking past me.
No.
So in theory, then, 60% doesn't, still doesn't get us to a place where if we decided at, at, at any point, it's not like we wasted that money. If we decided to subtract a few things, you know, some of, some of that is, is still necessary and still moves us along without locking us into that $5 million north.
Yeah, I mean, you're technically, you're not locked in until it goes out to full bid, you know. We can, we can break the bid package out however you want. And, you know, I, I would say, you know, it would be good to know at 60% if you would rather hold off on, let's say, the spray ground, for example. Because you'd probably want me to design that space that looks, you know, like it was meant to be like that ahead of time. So, so even though we might lose something like that, it's like, well, what's going to be there instead? And so it could be just a play lawn, you know. But I would want to know, you know, how do the paths connect through there and things like that. So I think at 60% it'd be good to, to get that feedback from you all.
Right. Now, I, I, and that's, I think, what, what I'm trying to get an understanding of is, is, you know, going to 60% gives us a, a real good vision and good breakdown now of some of the implications of costs that we can then start making some decisions. Plus, in theory, we'd have more understanding, a better understanding of financial support that we might have from other sources. So, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Ted. This brings us to the last item under the city administrator report, and that is the request for indemnification.
Right, thank you, Mayor Dimon. At the last meeting, the city attorneys was directed to send a letter to, just trying to find it here, to the U.S. Attorney's Office, asking for copies of documents, statements, testimonies, and reports with what Mr. Thornton characterizes as a now concluded investigation so that the city can make more informed decision. And when I spoke to Kevin O'Keefe last Friday, he had received no response. So I'm sharing that with you. Also, I met with the folks from Thomas McGee, and they're taking over for Daniel and Henry as the administrators of Slate, and mentioned that there is an opportunity for the city to submit this under the city's professional employment practices' insurance coverage. So I wanted to share that with the board as an update. I have not submitted it yet.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for city administrator on that? Does the board care to direct staff to do anything with this request at this point? Alderman Gould?
Just as a clarification question. So this letter has gone out, but we, we, we just haven't heard a response yet.
That's correct.
So, I mean, it seems like let's, it would seem to me that let's give it a little bit more time to see if they respond to it, right? So that we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
There's no rush.
Deadline.
There's, there's no rush to this, right?
No. No, I mean, you, you simply have a request. And, you know, you all can decide whatever you want to do with that request.
And so there's no deadline to even put, put it to Slate? Or is that what you said?
Well, they haven't indicated to me that, you know, there is a deadline or there isn't. And, you know, the city wouldn't know whether they're going to deny it or not until after we've submitted it mindfully that time has lapsed, you know, since this, this happened.
Right, okay.
Alderman Sims?
I would, I mean, I would be inclined to just make the insurance claim. I mean, they can deny it. They could accept it with qualifications. Maybe it falls within, you know, a, a minimum amount we'll have to pay. I mean, I, I'll stick my neck out this much to say if you sit on making an insurance claim, it usually prejudices you. So, I mean, we got this demand. I mean, it's like getting into a car accident. I'll send it to the insur, I'm inclined to at least make the claim. And that way, we still have, we haven't committed to anything, and we still have time to see if we get the record. That gives us, you know, additional rope in terms of, you know, what we ultimately decide what we want to do about this.
Alderman Tice?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I just wonder why we couldn't work on a parallel path and submit this to, to the insurance and, and let them see what the coverage is.
Well, and I just want to make sure that, that staff understands the direction. Are you, are you asking, because as I'm, I'm here, there might be two separate questions there. One would be, first, turn it over to the insurance company to see if in fact there even is coverage in the first place. Or are you directing staff just to turn it completely over to the insurance company, and then they would take it, and if they deem that there is coverage, then they would?
So when we submit, we, we don't ask those questions. And they come back with their determination, whether they deny or don't deny.
If they don't deny, then what happens?
Then?
Then we're out of it at that point. If, if, if they don't deny coverage, then you all don't have a say in, in that request. It's in the hands of the, the insurance company.
Exactly.
Alderman Plufka?
What if they pay the claim, but they audit it and they decide that $13,388 is, you know, too much and it should have been $6,000?
I don't know that that's their process. Well, it, I think it is. Let me take that back.
I mean, in my 33 years of representing or?
It would be inclusive of their process. So they would know that before a determination.
I've never met an insurance company that didn't love auditing.
So they, they would do that. That would be part of their process.
All right. So, okay.
Before they would ever pay it out.
So is somebody making a motion then? Or are we, where are we at?
Somebody would like to make a motion.
Well, I guess, I mean, I make a motion to, to.
Authorize staff to?
Authorize staff to, to make an insurance claim with, with regard to the request for attorney fee reimbursements from.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize staff to essentially turn this over to our professional insurance and let them do whatever they are going to do with it and second it. Everybody understand what, what the motion is? Alderman Waggy?
Yeah, I, I still find it very concerning that there was a federal investigation possibly into something that happened at Brentwood, and we have zero information about what that was or, or anything, and we're being asked for money. So I'm not in favor of spending any calories submitting this to anybody, because that will come back to us as some form of cost, even though maybe less than the $13,000, even if they reject it. So I don't think we should do anything until we have much more information about what the situation is.
Is there a deductible that would come into play on that?
Yes, it's $5,000.
$5,000 deductible. Okay. Any other discussion on the, Alderman Sims?
My, to Alderman Waggy's point, my only, my only experience with insurance claims is that you've got to make the claim in the first instance or you're looking at a waiver. I don't, I'm not saying, you know, we, we do, we do anything other than make the claim. That's, that's my only concern, which was why to act sooner than later while perhaps our request for information is still pending.
Well, that, and that's why I was trying to find out exactly what the motion was, because that's how I, that's what I thought you were wanting to do. And that's why I was asking our city administrator, and she was saying, well, that's not what happens. We don't turn it in to see if, first of all, there's coverage.
Stephanie could speak to that. Okay.
So I'm just going to give you an example of something that happened with me recently with respect to a city and a claim that was made. We went ahead and put the insurance company on notice, but we let the insurance company know that we were still working on it. I just didn't want that period of time to go by where they would say, oh, no, you waited too long. So I went ahead and put them on notice. They did allow me time to go ahead and work on it. We were able to work out something so much cheaper that the city was happy with that was much below their, their deductible. And so then the insurance company never really came into play. But I did cover the city by at least putting them on notice and then asking them for time to, to try and work this out.
Was that before the work had been performed by the, by the attorneys? You put them on notice before the work was in?
I put them on notice, yeah, as soon as we, as soon as we found out, or as soon as the claim was communicated to us. And, and then I did the work for the city and in getting it resolved, which took, you know, a few months, but.
Okay. So I, I'm not trying to take away from you, but I, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I think what the, Alderman Waggy's kind of wanting here is, is there a way to do what you just described, but in our situation where the attorney's fees already been incurred? The work's been done. So is there some way still just to go ahead and put the insurance company on notice with the caveat that the board is still looking into this? We don't want the insurance company to pay anything on this.
Yes, I do believe that there's a way to do that. And we would need to work with Thomas McGee and make sure that they relay that to the insurance company to let them know that this is just notice of a potential claim and that the city's still working on it to determine the merits of the claim and to determine whether it should even go any further.
Okay. Alderman Plufka?
It seems to me, especially in light of the fact that us agreeing to pay this is purely discretionary by ordinance, that, that this makes more sense, that, that just notifying them of the claim at this point makes more sense. Okay.
If I may interject, so the, I mentioned earlier when the question was asked, what is the deductible? So there are different levels, I look at this carefully, depending on what we're submitting it for, whether it's public officials wrongful act coverage, non-monetary relief, defense-only coverage, employment practices liability and third-party liability coverage. The deductible is $5,000, $5,000, $20,000, $5,000. So it does jump. I just wanted to make sure I covered that with you all.
All right. Any other questions? So we have a motion to, I don't know, in light of the discussion, you want to stick with that motion or do you want to?
I mean, I, I feel like I'm, like, how thin, like, can we slice the pursuit? Like, I, I, a motion to put them on notice of a potential claim consistent with what our acting city attorney described for us tonight. Is that, do you need another 500 words? Will that read?
I, I think I understand what, what your motion is.
If, if she's amended her motion, I will amend my second.
Okay. So we have an amended motion, as I understand it, simply to put the insurance company on notice of this claim, but, potential claim, but we are not authorizing the insurance company to do anything with this claim, in that the board is still trying to, to look into this. Everybody okay with that? Very lengthy motion. Okay, any further discussion on that? Good luck writing that one up, Kelly. Okay, do we need a roll call on this or is voice?
Yes.
Roll call. Okay, roll call, please, Kelly.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderman Tice?
Yes.
Alderman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggy?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
That gets us into old business, which we have none, down to new business, we have two items.
Do we have consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. We have consent agenda, three items on the consent agenda. Any questions, any requests, remove anything off the consent agenda? None of the board would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's drop down to new business, the two items under there. The first is bill number 6352. Madam City Attorney, can we get a first reading of bill 6352 by title only, please?
An ordinance approving maintenance and easement agree, agreements with Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for the Brentwood Bound Improvements Project.
Great, thank you. Dan, are you presenting on this?
If you recall, at the last meeting, we had more exhibits. Those were pulled since the consultants needs, or the consultant team needs more time to develop those exhibits. These are complete, and these are actually for a private reserve sewer easement. So a little bit different, some of these that we brought back in the past were for encroachments. These are for future easements that MSD needs at these three locations. So if you look in your packet, you'll see those three addresses, Bonpart and two on Mary Avenue. So very similar to what we brought back in the past, these would be approved and then recorded, and we would receive copies.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dan on this? We would like to have a second read tonight, if all possible.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All, any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Can we get a second read by title only of bill 6352, please?
An ordinance approving maintenance and easement agreements with Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for the Brentwood Bound Improvements Project.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect bill 6352 in ordinance form?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Alderman Gould, seconded by Alderman Waggie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Waggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, the motion carries and bill, the bill will become ordinance 4988.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Brings us down to new business, item B, bill number 6354. Can we get a first reading of bill 6354 by title only, please?
An ordinance amending chapter 600 of the Brentwood City Code relating to alcoholic beverages.